All right, welcome to everyone. It's the February 16th, 2022 meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors. And call them meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
For all.
All right, thank you. We'll start with, we'll have the clerk do call the roll, please.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor Headland.
Here.
Supervisor Score.
Here.
Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Maves.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn.
Here.
Supervisor Rogers.
Here.
Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Kneer.
Here.
Supervisor Cromry. Supervisor Calabrese.
Here.
Supervisor Keter.
Here.
Supervisor Vogel.
Here.
Supervisor McCullough.
Here.
Supervisor Story. Supervisor Story. Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Here.
Supervisor Niehoff. Supervisor Niehoff. Supervisor Morehouse.
Here.
Supervisor Tripp.
Here.
Supervisor Prochnow.
Here.
Supervisor Jensen.
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Bauer.
Here.
Supervisor Lino.
Here.
Supervisor Hartung.
Here.
Did you check with the ones that weren't here? I think some, some are.
Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Story.
She is here. She's here. Sheila, we see a suggest wave.
Supervisor Niehoff.
Here. I had a internet glitch.
Chairman Bartlett.
Here. All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes.
I saw move.
They've got a motion from Supervisor Steen and a second Supervisor Lino. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Ousted. Motion carried. Moving on to presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. Do we have any other than public comments? I don't. Okay, public comments. Did we have one public comment?
Two people.
I have two people in the waiting room. I can bring them in individually.
Yes, please.
The first one is Kellen Cassilius. It's still connecting to audio.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, it looks like they are connected to audio now.
Hey, Kellen, if you would state your name and address. And you are muted at this point. You have to unmute yourself.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Kellen Cassilius, address is N 1169, County Worldwide, Manami, 54751.
Go ahead then.
Okay. I'm the treasurer for Dunn County Fishing Game, and the Fishing Game has been working with the fair since 2015, working in partnership selling beer at the grandstand. The profits are then split with the fair and the Dunn County Fishing Game. The funds earned by this task by donating between eighty-five and a hundred labor hours per year has become one of the club's key fundraisers that help us plan and fund various projects for the county. It has been included in our budget planning. The payment has always been delayed by a couple months, which I could never understand, because once the bills are paid, the payments should be paid in timely manner. The same time, like, same time when the beer is paid for. But here we are in mid-February, and we still have not been paid from the fair of 2020 of last year. I have reached out to the Lions Club, and they also have not been paid. The Dunn County Fishing Game and Lions Clubs are two significant not-for-profit organizations in Dunn County. And these and other fundraisers are very important to allow sustainability and support to provide positive projects for both the environment and the community. Per Debbie's calculation, the revenue for the grandstand last year was $14,369. The expense for beer, ice, and sales tax was $51.77, and the profit of $9,141 was with the grandstand. So you split that, and the Dunn County Fishing Game is still waiting for the payment of $4,595.72. A suggestion from the club, and it took me a while to really wrap my arms around, but it makes sense to me, is to prevent this delay of payment in the future would be to let the club purchase and manage the beer and ice. Everything would be the same. The fair would receive the same 50% of the profits from the sales. We would provide the ice from the clubhouse, and what we would need from the fair board is to still need the power hookup for the trailer. And the freezers would need to be working so we could take the ice that we made at the clubhouse and put it in the coolers till needed. And I guess I'm going for an explanation on why we haven't been paid yet, and, and if this proposal is something that would make sense to help prevent this delay in the future. I'm, like I said, I'm the treasurer, so I do a lot of the paperwork and stuff, and having us take care of the beer and the ice would be no issue. Any questions that anybody has?
Probably it's not appropriate for questions at this time, Kellen, but I would suggest that you may forward your recommendations for the future to the fair board. Maybe talk to them, go to, go to a meeting or ask to be put on that agenda. And we will try to find out what's happening with the payment to the clubs. Thank you.
Okay, so, so you don't have any direct responsibilities with the fair as far as making payments through the county?
It goes through, but it also goes through the fair board, so we're gonna have to look into that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, I've been working with Debbie and, yeah, she just keeps saying that, well lately, now that the funds have been taken out of the account, and she doesn't know where the funds are, so I'm, I've got some concerns.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Thank you.
This, this, bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Krista, you have someone else?
Yep, there is one other individual. This is just a phone number. I am unsure who it is at this time. Can I ask who's calling in from the number ending 1057? Again, who's calling in from the number ending 1057?
Pardon me?
Can I ask who's calling from this number?
Christine Ost.
Okay. Did you send in a public comment request?
Yes.
Okay, I did not receive one. We have one for another individual.
And band worker?
Yep, that, that would be it.
Okay, that's my husband.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. It was Christine, I believe. Could you?
Yeah.
Date your name and address, please, and then go ahead.
Christine Ost, N 8197, 580th Street, Colfax, Wisconsin.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm just standing by because we have a plus for a rezone. If there's any questions.
Oh, the speaking for the rezones would have been done at the open hearing. I don't know exactly what date that took place, but anyway, tonight, there would be no speaking on the rezones. So if you want, you're more than welcome to listen in on the, on the YouTube.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
I will do that. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Bye.
Bye. Krista, is there anything else?
I do not have anyone else.
All right.
I've got the one.
And and our clerk will read the one that we got for by email.
On Wednesday, January 19th, 2022, the following communication was submitted via public comment email. Hello, in the December 29th edition of the Colfax Messenger, there is an article written by Leanne Ralph regarding a special meeting of the Dunn County Board to approve and amend property tax levy. The article states in part, quote, "The fact that illegal taxes were not included in the tax levy approved in November was caught by the current treasurer and was due to a communication from the previous treasurer that had not been shared with the staff," he said, end quote. All of that information in the file, all of that information in a file in the file cabinet in the treasurer's office, and the payments themselves could have been viewed in the county software. In addition, the state sends out an email blast to the county clerks and county treasurers in early November regarding chargebacks. Again, all of that information was available if someone would have checked. I can completely understand that everybody makes mistakes, but I don't feel like my reputation needs to be dragged through the mud because someone or multiple someones didn't bother to do their job. In the future, I would expect them to take ownership of their own mistakes. Thank you for your time, Doris Meyer.
All right, thank you. And that was the only one?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to appointments, we have one for the Economic Development Corporate Board of Directors to reappoint Julie Govan, and this needs board confirmation, so I need a
I saw move. I second it.
Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Anderson seconds. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 All right. Ousted motion carries. We will now move to the county managers' report. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Thank you and good evening. Not a lot on my report this month. The first item relates to the special meeting of the county board that is scheduled for Monday, February 28th to present the 2022 legislative agenda for, to our elected representatives. Hopefully, all of you are able to attend that meeting. It will be remote. I've already gotten confirmation of attendance from two of the state senators, one of our representatives, and another representative who said that he has a conflict but would send a member of his staff. So that is our opportunity annually to present our legislative agenda, the items that we want the elected representatives to advocate for us in Madison. It's also an opportunity to hear from them, so hopefully, everybody will be able to make that meeting. Other than that, I, you also have in your packet of materials, the purchase orders over $40,000 for your review. A number of these are payments, but I'd be happy to try to field any questions anyone may have regarding those.
I don't see any questions. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the reports of the departments then. Our first report is from the county clerk. Andrew, would you like to highlight anything or add anything to your report?
I certainly can, just very briefly. 2021 was a busier in the clerk's office. There was a new clerk chosen by the county board who started and has very much enjoyed their job, but was very busy with redistricting. Also, the solicitation of new election equipment, which was just used for the first time in a series of seventeen school district primaries throughout seventeen municipalities in Dunn County yesterday. Everyone seemed to enjoy the new equipment and the streamlining process of reporting information to the county last night. And I can certainly answer any questions that anybody might have.
Anybody have any questions for the clerk? Supervisor, no.
Yes, Andrew, I was just wondering, were there any glitches with the new equipment?
There was a little bit of a learning curve yesterday. Making sure that the machines were plugged in and not just relying on battery power. But overall, the clerks, all the municipal clerks who checked their equipment back in today indicated that they liked the new equipment. There were no issues. It was a very streamlined process.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Yeah.
As someone who voted yesterday, the process went very well. The equipment worked smoothly, and I was quite pleased with the result.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Supervisor Morehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question for the county clerk. I just wanted to say thank you. This is a very comprehensive report, and it was very helpful, particularly about the new election equipment, stuff in there that I didn't know. So thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to the Dunn County Transit Annual Report. Austin, I, I know I saw you earlier. Is there?
I might be on page two of yours.
Would you like anything you have to highlight or add to this? This very detailed report also, I thought.
Thank you for having me here tonight. One thing I didn't talk too much or at all in the report that I have in everybody's packets was just our budget for the year, and we did pretty well on that. So we can have a cash reserve account. We had about 15% to the good. And have a lot of good new pieces of equipment here to really help us save money in the future as well with the savings that we had, as you can see in the slide where I talked about what we got around the shop and around the office to keep our efficiency up and improving. It's been a great year, and we're looking forward to a strong 2022. And as you can see in some of the numbers from even 2020 to 2021, how they've improved. In 2021, our community route was a little bit longer of a loop. We got it down to a one-hour loop. It's very easy to follow. It does eight loops around the city per day, and it's free to all of the public, and that went into effect on June 1st of 21. So there's no reason anybody can't get out and get to vote or get groceries or anything else with what we're doing on the community route. And it's been very good, and we've had some positive feedback, but reach out with any other questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yeah, thank you for the report. My question has to do with shelters. That's part of your program then, too, that, that they were put up and, and how they have been used, and has there been any, any comments on people that are using the shelters?
Yep, so previous transit manager did a lot to putting that together. I was hired on right about the tail end of that. Those got installed around October of 2020. Where we've really seen improvements on ridership is at some of these bus shelters that people didn't know that those were bus stops. So that's been great. Especially in the snowy and windy days, the students are using it. We have pamphlets for the community route. We had no place to put them before because there is no shelter to put pamphlets and brochures of what the routes were, so it exponentially helps our ridership with having those. And people understanding how the buses work and when they're going to be there next. So it's been great. One thing we didn't know is, hey, before there's no shelters, it, the snow didn't have to get moved, so we've overcame a lot of little things that you wouldn't necessarily think about right away and then put a plan in place to take care of it, but it's been great having those.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. All right, so we'll move on to the medical examiner's annual report. Our medical examiner is here, I believe, Russ. Marcy?
Yes. Yes, good evening.
Do you have anything to highlight or add to your report?
I do not have any additions to my report tonight or the data that was provided, but I would entertain any questions that anybody might have.
Have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I was just wondering, Marcy, is, is the synergy that you've got between Eau Claire County and Dunn County, is that continuing to work as it has?
Yes, it has. I believe we have a very good working relationship, and provision of medical examiner services has gone without any interruption for the past nearly five years of 24-hour-a-day service.
Okay, excellent. Glad to hear it. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10 on our agenda, consideration of resolutions, reports, and ordinances from the standing committees. 10A is from the planning, 10A1 is from the Planning, Resource, and Development Committee, and ordinance denying a rezon petition in the town of Sherman. I need a motion for that. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Kneer seconds. Speaking to this. Supervisor Quinn, do you want to start?
You're muted, Tom.
You're muted, Tom.
I apologize for that. I, I would like, I would ask Andrew Jerzick, our zoning administrator, to make some initial comments.
All right. Go ahead, Ann.
Um, yeah, sorry, just getting my camera turned on. So would, would you like to hear just kind of why we denied this at the zoning and office? Is that what we're looking for?
I think so, that, why, why you recommended that, probably.
So, um, this was a request for an amendment to rezone a parcel of land from general ag to general commercial. Our reasons for recommendation of denial. The comprehensive land use plan did not indicate a fan, future land use for the town of Sherman. This is within the town of Sherman. The request does not fit the development pattern of the neighborhood, which is toward residential. It did not fit the current nature of the area, which is mostly agricultural and increasingly residential. And the expansion of commercial zoning in this area would potentially worsen existing compatibility issues that were created by previous spot zoning.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Quinn, go ahead.
Did you call a meeting chair?
Yes.
Okay, I, if I could, I would perhaps add some context to give the board a sense of what the committee discussion and decision-making was like, and I think other committee members want, they want add to that, but, so the, his, a little bit of background, this property was initially zone general ag. Or isn't zone general ag, and the adjoining property was also, that holds the business, was also zone general ag. Mr. Witsky, maybe a while back when he bought the property, I think, requested that he receive a permit to establish a home-based business, which is allowed in both residential and in general ag, but with some restrictions. I mean, it does, it, it does say that there'll be limited kind of commercial use that, for example, that the business will not employ more than two people beyond the people who live in a home, the residents. Over the years, that business grew beyond those those provisions, and, and he, Mr. Witsky asked, requested to have the parcel where the businesses are owned, zone, rezoned commercial. The committee at that time, I think with some reluctance, agreed that it was no longer a home business, and perhaps the best solution was to zone a commercial. In the meantime, while operating that business, Mr. Witsky was using an adjacent property that's also still own zone general ag to store equipment and machinery used occasionally in the course of his business. That is not an acceptable use in general ag right now, and was adjacent to several, immediately adjacent to several residential properties.
Immediately adjacent to several residential properties. So. We rejected the application to rezone that general egg property into residential because it would be a use in the use that was not compatible. Mister Whiskey is. Now asking to have the a parcel adjacent to the highway. That he owns, switched from general egg to commercial. So that he could move the storage of that equipment into that area. That's my that's the committee's understanding and that's what we were we discussed in the hearing. The committee's feeling is, as Ann said. That it's not necess it's not necessarily a good idea to to rezone that property at this time to commercial use. It's not, the county does not have a comprehensive plan that. Indicates that areas is appropriate for commercial use. And once it is on commercial, it is open to a whole variety of uses. May or may not be compatible with the count with the with the community's desires. So what we have proposed is that we not approve the rezone. And that we instead look for a solution. And we are prepared to look for that solution. And the solution we would explore would be to include in the county ordinances, a provision for. What we call contractor storage. We don't have this in our county zoning at this time, but there are incidents where it comes up where it would be useful. And that would allow. An area of general egg to be used as a storage area, provided it had. Adequate. Provisions for for screening and things like that, but it wouldn't require the property to be converted into. To fully into commercial use. Our intention is if the rezone is if the denial is upheld. Is to move is to begin the process of looking at establishing that kind of a contractor storage area. Which Mister Whiskey would be eligible to apply for and which we think. Would address his concerns in terms of providing space to move the current storage that he has onto. Adjoining property. But without. And I'm not going too long, but without the comprehensive plan of the town. Providing for designating area for for commercial use, we felt like. It was that that's the 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 idea of rezoning the property now would be a mistake. And potentially open up problems in the future. As Ann described. That's a long winded. I apologize for it, but if any of the other committee members want to share their thoughts on it. Either for or against that would.
That had a question right before you. Supervisor Anderson, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Bartlett. I want to make sure that I certainly I serve on this committee, the PR and D committee. And I have greatest respect for all of our staff, your zoning and planning. And and what what our chairman supervisor Quinn just said, we had an excellent meeting and. I'm one of them that voted no. And I I just want my fellow supervisors to know why I voted no, because I think. What we heard from Supervisor Quinn will 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 work in the future, but at the time. We heard from the township and they were in full support of 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 this petition. Did not feel it should be denied. And then when I look at at the operation, I drive by there a lot and I see what they're doing. I was always impressed. It's neat. It's groomed. It's well taken care of and I know. We don't want to make special exemptions. I know that. So I want you to know why this vote was not unanimous. And I still have some concerns and when we vote for this, after what. Supervisor Quinn just said, I maybe we can make this work. I hope so, so that it'll work for the the applicant. But I want you to know to our staff, I certainly think you're doing your job and you stated that very well. And and why you recommended the denial, but I want you all to know I will be not voting to to deny this. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Anyone else like to speak? Supervisor Bauer and then Supervisor Rogers.
I guess I got a question on what type of business it is. Is it any chance of ground contamination or how close to the water is that?
Who would like to answer that Supervisor Quinn?
Well, I can try. I I think we're we're a little unclear. It's a it's an industrial coating business. They do mostly off-site work where they. Mix chemicals and. And take, as I understand it, and take them to various locations for water towers, tanks. Things where sandblasting and 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 recoding with industrial coatings would be appropriate outside. So it's a it's it's a pretty certainly not a home business anymore. It is as Secretary Anderson indicated, it appears to be. Well, ordered, but we don't really know for sure what the whether there are. I guess I assume that everything's operating fine, but that's what it is. It's it's an industrial coating business that. Does mixing and. Some preparation on site inside the building they have there, but most of the activities take place off the site.
Supervisor Rogers.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to thank Tom and and Mister Anderson and Ann and also the conversation I had with. Mike Kinnear about this on the phone. I just. I just want to make a comment that I that I have some concerns. As this issue comes before the Board of Supervisors, it's our responsibility. Each of us to make an informed decision and vote on this matter. As we represent the this our districts in the best interest of the county. These are decisions that we have. We've been elected to make informed choices. This zoning request has come before the PR and D a couple of times. I did not attend each of those meetings. Nor was I fully aware that the public hearings regarding this rezoning request would require this extensive discussion. The PR and D committee forwarded this matter to us with a split decision. It seems only right that the individual making this request would have had the opportunity to present his case before. The people tasked with making the final decision on this on his fate, the county board. I would go so far as to say I believe it's wrong to prevent him from speaking in the public comment. Section of this meeting. At the same time, it should be appropriate for any individual or neighbors that don't support or that support or oppose this request. To have that opportunity to speak as well. I did not support the resolution in September of twenty nineteen and I continued to disagree with the policy. That we prevent Dunn County residents the right to speak in the public comment of the county board regarding issues of. What could be grave concern for them. It frustrates me to hear the arguments that it may take too much time. So now. We as a board will decide this issue. But we make that decision on bits and pieces of the information we're given. I don't want to blindly make that decision based on the committee's split decision. But yet this requires. It does require coming to the full board. It's not a committee decision. So I I in I guess in conclusion, I would have liked to have heard. From the petitioner and maybe some of the neighbors that had support or disagreements with it. That can't be done, unfortunately. So that was the point I wanted to make, a little frustrated. We don't have as much information as we could have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Supervisor Comery and then Supervisor Maves.
Yes, this is for Tom. Thank you, Chairman. Are there any other businesses in the township of Sherman? Operating on. On agricultural classified land versus commercial?
I can't answer that, so I don't know. Does.
Yeah, my question for it was for Tom Quinn.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, could you repeat the question? I'm not sure I understood it quite.
Are there any other businesses similar to Mister Wilkes that are operating in the township of Sherman? On commercial egg business or commercial egg land instead of. Instead of commercial?
I. I don't believe that there are. I think the businesses, the businesses that are that are larger than home businesses. I believe are either are operated under a commercial zoning at this point in time. That's my understanding. I I'm not sure though.
Supervisor Maves.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I just got a couple of comments to make. This is in my district and I do drive by it every day. And I I guess the one the one. And I I have a couple of questions. First off, I need a better understanding on what. Spot zoning really means and how you're utilizing spot zoning. I mean, is is that in relationship to the size of the parcel that's being zoned? Is or you know, or I mean, I I think we all need to have a better understanding. How when you say it's spot zoning, what your definition of spot zone or what the county's definition of spot zoning is. I also am hesitant to anytime we start talking about granting commercial status. To any piece of ground because of the opportunities that opens up down the road that's that we don't even know of now. And the question was raised as far as groundwater and what happens right now and on this parcel that that's under discussion. They actually they do sandblast some some of their tanks and their equipment. There they that's where they clean them up. They pull them they pull the trailers out there and they sandblast them right there. So that's some information that I don't think has been brought forward in any of the discussion. So I I guess my my first question would be a definition of spot zoning. As the county sees it. Thank you.
Ann, would you like to answer that about spot zoning, please?
Sure. So the classic definition of spot zoning is the process of singling out a small parcel of land. For a use classification that's different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of that property and to the potential detriment of other owners. So it's usually just a smaller area that's changed and it's not consistent with the other pieces nearby.
Thank you. Any other questions? Supervisor Vogel, then Supervisor Keith.
Thank you. I had a question. So if the town. Finishes their comprehensive plan and decides that every along highway twenty-five. Could be commercial. Then with this petition, just go through the process or and how far along are they in that? Planning process?
Supervisor Quinn.
Well, I and do you want to answer that or I can try?
I can answer a little bit, I think.
Okay.
So this is something that I discussed with the town chair for Sherman. Just saying, you know, it would have really helped us to know what the intention of of the. Future land use of this area is unfortunately, when the comprehensive was plan was done before. Sherman did not indicate what they wanted there, so we really didn't have anything. So I believe that they are taking steps to update their plan so that they have something like that. That would be, I mean, if they had a plan in place that said that this was going to be a commercial district in their eyes. That would have helped us tremendously.
Supervisor Quinn, go ahead.
Well, just to note that I think it's it's. There are we are as a county going to be looking at a county comprehensive plan in the next year and. I think we can expect and hope that towns will do to go through the same process. But it's important to note that part of the comprehensive planning process is that you you engage. Input and dialogue within the broader community so that citizens. It more than just the people on the town board have a chance to weigh in on what decisions are made. And that's that's really the way. That decisions about whether something is zoned in one way or the other. It's the best way to make it. Also note that the state. Comprehensive zoning statute does not require the town to. Establish a a commercial zone. But if it does, then they then they need to identify where that is, but it doesn't say you must do that. So it really is up to the citizens of the of the town.
Thank you. Supervisor Score. Um, there's a business just kind of north where highway D and twenty-five and that's in the town of Tainer. Is that commercial?
You talking about the greenhouse?
Yes.
So greenhouses are a use that is and can knows more about the side of the greenhouses. Of that sort are uses that are allowable in a general agricultural district. That kind of business is deemed to be sort of agricultural. Rural character and nature, and so it is possible to permit that kind of business in a general egg area.
Supervisor Bjork.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I wasn't really. Aware of where this business was, other than I heard that it was rezoning along highway twenty-five north. And when I found out where it was and what it is that they did. You know, it it occurred to me and I I know two drivers. That left their jobs where I was at and went to work. They're going all over the country, refishing water towers and different things in the sand blast and everything like that. So I got two things. Number one, if we can't have economic development in Dunn County along the US highway twenty-five. You know, why not? I mean, I think when general egg was put in there all along twenty-five was it. Had no consideration of what might be coming down future. And secondly, you know, we ought to be applauding somebody. That can take his business from. And grow it so that he employs other people and. Provides incomes for those families. And then thirdly. In the business of transportation, I mean, being along highway twenty-five means that you have access in and out of your business. Not having to worry about road bans. You're on a state highway and. The guy made a smart move and where he started his business. And for us to hold back and not allow that business to grow. I think is a mistake. Highway twenty-five ought to be an economic. Area. I don't know what the term is, but you know, we can go east and west on twenty-nine. We ought to be able to go north on twenty-five and have economic development. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Keith.
Yeah, I was just commenting on people speaking in front of our group on a question like this. I think we had that happen one other time and I, as I recall, that's what the public hearing is for. In fairness to everybody, so they're properly notified and things. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody else? Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you Chairman Bartlett. Supervisor Quinn, what was the name again of the potential new categorization of, of something that you might want to work out?
Sure. So it's a, it's called a contractor's storage area. It's, it would, it would be an addition to our ordinance that would say that in a general ag area, and maybe in other areas too, but in a general ag area, there would be an opportunity for businesses that had some outside storage that they needed and that we could allow, if they could apply for a special exception to allow that storage and establish certain provisions to provide for screening and, and that sort of thing. But it would be, it would be a way to, it's the sort of thing that would allow this business which has, which, which has outside storage that it needs to, needs to deal with because the outside storage is not, you know, not, not really where it should be. It would allow that to move that storage to this other property without having to change the underlying zoning that property. If in the future, the town, Alex, town made, as someone noted before, if in the future the town made a decision to, to designate this area as commercial or light industrial, that would, that would make it much more easier to rezone it. But this would be a way to work around that and allow the business to operate and expand. You know, we think it would be, we think it would be a, a solution that would work for the community and for Mr. Whiskey's business.
Okay, and just to follow up on that, with that information, thank you Supervisor Quinn. In the interim, let's say that this, this gets denied tonight. And then in the interim between that and this potential contractor's storage, which seems to be obviously already in the works, at least in the minds of, of people, would this business be penalized or have to cease operations in the interim between this zoning being denied and the potential of that new contractor's storage plan?
I don't, yeah, I think the, our intention is to work with Mr. Whitkey. If this were to go through, it was to work with Mr. Whitkey to allow him to use the current arrangement that he has until such time as we can get a ordinance in place. That's my understanding. And that's my intention as Chair of the committee is to work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Keneer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Chairman Quinn has made really good points. They've been spread out over multiple questions. We've kind of gone astray a little bit, but so let me just summarize a little bit what we said. I won't go back as far as Chair Supervisor Quinn, but just a few years back, Mr. Whitkey petitioned for a rezone. His business needed to expand. He had to get the rezone to expand. We were concerned, but it's very close to the lake. But at the time, there was nothing that seemed that could be polluted. So there was no other reasonable way for him to expand other than a rezone. So he was granted a rezone to put a building up and continue his business. Now, this is totally different. This really started out as a complaint about parking. And Mr. Whitkey is trying to come up with a way to deal with that. And, and he's come to us and after a bit, he said, oh, I'd like to do a rezone. But this is different. He doesn't have to do a rezone to keep his business going and keep it working. The solution that Chairman Quinn outlined with the contractor's storage gives Mr. Whitkey the ability to store his things. It gives the county the ability to wait on a rezone to commercial. Everybody's happy. He gets everything he needs. Supervisor Bjork thought we're stopping his expansion. Well, no. Absolutely nothing would change. We just have a different way of reaching it. And normally when you do rezones, you give the minimum amount of relief necessary for the applicant to meet their needs. And what Chairman Quinn said, it's just, it's perfect. It's an excellent solution. So we're not holding anybody back. We're making it work for the county. It's extremely close to the water and not all of 25 is necessarily good for commercial. But we'll let the town decide that when they're done with their comp plan. So I voted for this for those reasons. Thank you.
Any other speaking before we vote?
Hi, Chairman. Supervisor Hedlund.
Go ahead Supervisor Hedlund, you wanted to say something?
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A question, a little bit of a question going back to the, the committee and maybe back to our staff, but is there really any difference in this situation than what there is for all the commercial farm implement providers? And I don't mean sellers, but I mean people who go on to do custom work, who have their combines and, and grain hauling wagons and, and tractors and, and turf rollers and so forth, all parked out on, again, on the edge of the roads that can get to them without worrying about road bans. Are those areas all rezoned or, or is it just, just because of a complaint? And I think maybe that's what you were referring to, but I guess just a little careful here in what we're doing and that I think that this situation exists all over the county. Thank you.
Supervisor Quinn. You're muted, Tom.
I got my, my hound is causing some noise problems too. I think I can answer that. We have, I mean, the purpose of, of agricultural zoning, both general ag and, and intensive ag is to, is to sort of protect the ability and encourage the ability of agricultural operations in the county, recognizing that agriculture is part of the rural economic community fabric. So the, the zoning for general ag, for example, and you know, actually in any of the ag districts, generally it provides a provision that allows for businesses that serve an agricultural function, that provides services to agriculture, some special consideration in how they're cited and where they're cited. And that's, that's where most of these contracting ag contract businesses fit into. It's a little different than an industrial use. It has nothing to do with agricultural character and uses of the land.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any other questions or any speaking, so we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Maves.
Yeah, I do have a question now. Based on what Supervisor Quinn has said, they're willing to move forward and look at alternative methods to allow this business to proceed. So is it, if, if this vote goes through and the request is denied, then, I mean, in all fairness to Mr. Whitkey, how does he know for sure the county's, I mean, I mean, I believe what Tom has to say. But just to protect the interest of, of Mr. Whitkey, what, what would be the proper protocol to send it back to committee to make sure that that's the next step in process? Or, or is it a two-step process or, I, I guess I'm looking for legal counsel or advice as to how do we send it back to committee and make sure that they work on an outcome that makes everybody happy?
Okay. The outcome that they're working on would not be to rezone. It would be to, to make, to be able to park equipment in a egg zone. So this is, has to do with a rezone.
I, I understand that, but I just want to make sure.
We'll ask Nick if there's something that could be tied in, but I don't see how that would happen.
No, they're really disconnected. I think what Supervisor Quinn is saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is an issue that has, you know, is starting to show up. And it's a, it's a, an appropriate and a reasonable way to extend our zoning ordinance to make it useful for the people that need it for this particular kind of activity. But it wouldn't open the door to having a commercial, commercially zoned property because as has been said, once it becomes commercial, it's commercial. Then any, anything that qualifies for a commercial in the, in the zoning district can be done there. It's really disconnected from this. I, I think my take is you're being told this is something that the committee wants to look at and they want to look at it soon. I've already talked with Anne about this, the zoning administrator. And, you know, we're, you know, ready to move forward and bring some proposals for language to it. All it does is just expand a little bit some of the things that you can do in general agriculture. General agriculture ain't what it used to be. This is part of recognizing that. But they really are disconnected. So I think you, you need to, you need to vote on this. If the, if the vote doesn't pass, this would automatically be remanded back to the Planning Resource and Development Committee for drafting an ordinance granting the request.
Any other speaking? Or questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I might make one final comment.
Ed Supervisor Anderson.
Yes, thank you Chairman Bartlett. Well, everything I've heard this evening has been excellent and, and, and I really, you know, I, as I told you earlier, I voted no and the committee was not unanimous. And what I've heard, what, what, if it could go back to our committee again, I would, and after hearing Supervisor Maeve's suggestion, I, I then could support it, but I was committed, as I was at the committee meeting, that I didn't like it. And so if we're going to vote tonight, I, even though I think we, we can make it work, right now I can't support it. I would ask that we table it or delay it, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you. Any other speaking before we vote? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Denied. Moving on to 10A2 is an ordinance approving a rezone in the town of Tainer. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Story seconds. Speaking to this. Rezone. Supervisor Quinn.
I'd ask Anne, again, to provide the, the discussion on this.
All right.
Okay. So the applicant Christine Ost requested a map amendment to rezone a parcel of land from general ag to residential one to allow for the conveyance of land to adjoining properties. So it's just a portion of a parcel that she has. The reasons we recommended this for approval, the town and planning commission both approved this rezone. The proposal was consistent with the Dunn County Comprehensive Land Use Plan that indicates a future land use as residential. It fits the neighborhood's development pattern that's leaning toward residential and it's not impacted by wetlands, floodplain, or farmland preservation.
All right, thank you. Any other speaking? Supervisor Quinn, go ahead.
I don't, I don't have much to add. I think it's a fairly straightforward rezone. The committee agreed with Anne's recommendation and felt like it was a reasonable way to address a, a solution that the landowners wanted to engage.
Any other speaking? Any questions?
Just a clerical error that says Tonnerhead Cedar in there.
Oh. Catching that Supervisor Brocknell.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, the clerk has changed that already. Any other speaking towards that? Resolution? Or ordinance? All right, if there isn't any, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Ordinance passes. Moving on to 10B, this is from the executive committee, a resolution authorizing use of ARPA funds for rural broadband projects. Need a motion for this? Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Anderson seconds. Speaking to this.
Mr. Chairman, if I might begin. The CRNT committee had a special meeting a week ago on, on, on February 7th, so because of a timing issue. And we had to get this before the executive committee and, and the county board tonight because all of these grants are due at the state office on March 16th or 17th. And so we met and had a great discussion, our committee, and about applying ARPA funds. And this is what we're here for. The big, that wasn't, the, the discussion was how much should we apply? And we finally agreed on 100,000, which would be used only for these seven grants that are being applied for. One from the Blumer Telephone and Telegraph, a township of Colfax. One from Mosaic, which is a township of Grant. And they have taken over the, the entire township of Grant. One time Blumer had part of it. And the other five grants are for 24/7. That basically is what we call is donate around the city of Menominee and reaching out to Elk Mound. And if all of these seven grants would be approved, then, then our committee, it would go back, they would apply and our committee then would make a determination of, of this $100,000, how it would be applied toward these grants. But the big thing we wanted to do was we wanted to show that we were cooperating with these townships because almost every one of these townships applied 100% of their ARPA funds toward broadband grant in their township. And what a way to show cooperation with these townships. And so I, our committee strongly recommends you approve this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other speaking? Supervisor Quinn, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I would, so the- So the, I mean, we don't, we don't have, we have not established. Excuse me, a protocol for allocating, coming up with ideas to allocate. Request allocation of ARPA funds for special projects. And because this timeframe was so short, these, these applications really need to be dealt with. In the next couple of weeks, and this is the last county board meeting to authorize them. The committee decided to. Recommend a procedure for dealing with these particular grants. And, and that's what's before us tonight. This is a unique opportunity, as you all know, the, the state is, has been, has allocating. Significant, significant amount of money, there's no guarantee that's going to happen in the future. But also, we, we would like our fellow board members to know that. We think there may be, there probably likely will be. Opportunities for additional ARPA funds to be requested. And, but we would like those to be requested, perhaps during the, the. Consideration we have of our capital budget plan in March. So they're alongside the larger, larger context of what our overall budget is. And that's, that's our expectation, is we would deal with these. Grants now, allocate funds as best we can, help them get accepted if possible. But in the future, we may come back to the board as part of the larger board, or just board discussion and say, you know, it makes sense for us to. Considering allocating additional funds going, going forward.
Thank you Supervisor Gary Bjork.
How much does a county have of ARPA funds, what is the total amount?
We have five point six million dollars left that we have unallocated.
Okay, so a hundred thousand would be a pretty small part of it. Um, and my only other comment is with all this free money. Have you been to the grocery store yet? I went today and I couldn't believe how much stuff has gone up. It just, you know, you get all this inflation and that's part of all this free money, so it's not really free because you're paying more. For like your basic necessities, but that's just my comment, thank you.
I totally agree with you, it isn't free money. Any other comments? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yeah, thank you. Had the privilege to sit on Jim Anderson's committee and listen to Tom bring this forward and a lot of credit goes to him. And, you know, when we first started talking about this, it, it, it went back to the, the discussion happened to be. The haves and the have-nots back a generation ago. When rural electrification came into the countryside. And that some people had electricity and some people didn't have electricity. And. If you probably never had electricity, you, you, you maybe didn't know what you were missing out on. And I kind of think that's the same thing where we're at right now with broadband. And that we kind of owe it to our citizens to do what we can to get this work rolling forward. And a hundred thousand dollars really is just. It's, it's a token amount. I think surrounding counties are, are. So our person are, are supporting broadband to a much higher degree than us. I think our hundred thousand dollars is what, one point one percent of the total ARPA funds. And. I'm going to share, share an observation that I had early on when we were discussing this as far as rural electrification. And as you know, that I have drove semi and one time going to the cross. Between Hickston and Blair, that goes through Taylor, Wisconsin. And lots of sand mines there. So you've got the high-tech, high-tech, high-tech sand mines with big trucks and reducing hills to nothing. And hauling out, and then in the shadow of that, you have your Amish community. And one day when I went by, there was a girl, little girl, seven, ten years old, wearing her Amish. Clothing with, complete with a bonnet, carrying a gas lantern or to the barn. So they may not, you know, want electricity, may not need electricity. But citizens in Dunn County need broadband and we need to stand up and, and say. We're going to do what we can to have broadband be brought to all corners of Dunn County, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Story.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I was trying to think, I think it's been at least six years since I was in, in that committee. And heard that committee and the board gave us that task of moving forward on broadband. And at that time, it wasn't necessarily a real popular thing to, to be talked about. But with the surveys that were done and all of the hard work that was done by all those involved. And especially the hard work by the recent chair Jim Anderson and also Tom Quinn. I'm very excited to see that this day has come. And that everyone recognizes how important broadband really is and that we do have some funds for this. And I applaud the townships, I applaud all involved, I think it's been a cooperative effort. And I do see a lot of hope toward what the end result of this will be toward our economic development. As well as also allowing for our children in the schools to have access when they're at home and people that are on vacation. So I just wanted to, I guess, lift up that it's been at least six years coming. And we're here and there has been work that's been done through the six years. But this is, I think, kind of a giving Jim Anderson accolades for all that he's done for this project.
Thank you.
Any other speaking? I don't, I don't see any, so all in favor of approving this, say aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you. Wow.
All right. Announcements. This is Mr. Miller's last meeting, county board meeting. On the twenty eighth, yes, but his regular county board meeting, not the legislative one. But anyway, I wanted to thank him for the. He's brought us through some tough bu- budget issues, he's helped us start some, some things. Like the legislative adjust. That. Meeting that we're going to have late in February and our. CIP meetings that we've, we've started with capital projects. So I just, I just want to thank him for everything he's done and wish him the best in the future. All right, thank you, are there any other announcements? So our next, our next meeting will be February twenty eighth then. With the legislative people.
Seven o'clock, is that right?
Yes. Anything else? Not were adjourned, thank you.